Good evening and welcome to the Millis Public School School Committee meeting of October 20, I'm sorry, October 2nd, 2018. I'll take a roll call vote. My name is Stephen Catalano. I'm the chairperson. Kerry Roach, the secretary, will be here shortly. Robin Briggs.
Here.
Mr. Conroy, Mark Conroy, will be here probably within the next 20 minutes. And Denise Gibbons.
Here.
There is no teacher rep tonight. And the student reps, Dory Stefano is here.
Here.
And Ms. Gustafson, the superintendent.
I'm here.
Okay. Jody, is there anyone signed in for open session?
There's none.
Okay. So the action items, we have one action item, is the consideration to approve the nine, the September 25th, 2018, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that we approve the September 25th school meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Student reps? What do you got, Dory?
Homecoming tickets are being sold by the class of 2021 at both lunches. There's an optional field trip to Micro Group in Medway on October 12th relating to economy and manufacturing. The faculty variety shows this Thursday, October 4th. The proceeds all go to the GRIP scholarship. Colleges continue to visit during both lunches every day in the conference rooms. And homecoming is next week along with the homecoming football game.
Ms. Gustafson, do you have a talent or will you be at the talent show?
I have very few talents.
You have many talents.
But I will enjoy watching but could not get any talent pulled together this year.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. The next we'll, do we need to take anything out of order?
No, if we go to the super.
Do you want to do the superintendent's word?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report, first on the agenda is the superintendent's award.
Yes. Tonight is one of my favorite nights because we have here a student who is receiving the one superintendent's award that is awarded. Yes. So Georgia Riordan and her mother are here this evening. You may have a seat if you'd like. The superintendent's award is for someone having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents for academic excellence and character. Georgia Riordan is this year's recipient. And Georgia has been an outstanding student and community leader here at Millis High School. Georgia has been a four-year saxophonist in our band, participating in numerous community service events with Ms. Norton and her classmates. An avid reader and writer, Georgia has penned articles for our school newspaper and two years ago had an article published by the Millis-Medway News about the school trip to the presidential inauguration. Georgia founded the Big Sisters Organization here at Millis High, a women's empowerment group supervised by Ms. Yemba. She's been a member of peer leaders, been trained as part of our Mentors in Violence Prevention Program through Northeastern University, is an active tutor for Spanish classes, and has run cross-country. Georgia decided to try her hand in theater last year as part of the Millis Theater Group. And this fall, she's holding one of the lead roles in our drama club production of Alter Egos. This past year, Georgia was also hired as a volunteer intern for Mara Healy's campaign. Georgia is a strong advocate of community service and giving back. Freshman year, she helped organize a ride in the Pan Mass Challenge in honor of our own Ms. Shepherdson when she was diagnosed with breast cancer. And sophomore year, Georgia rode again raising nearly $1,500 for Dana Farber. Georgia embodies all of the qualities that make up the superintendent's award has been a wonderful ambassador for Millis High School and the Millis community. Congratulations.
Well, except your award.
Yes. You get it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Georgia.
Congratulations.
My pleasure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Want to take a picture, Nancy?
Oh, yeah. And if you don't mind, we'll pick off our minds and we can.
We'll get you in there, too.
Nancy, we should do one with you two and then we'll.
Okay.
And then we'll do the meeting with them, too.
All right.
Yes.
Why don't we scoot over a little so your mom can be on that side.
Jody, make me tall and put a suit on.
Say what purple feet you play.
Two, three, and cheese. One more time. Two, three, and cheese. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll tweet it out tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And Mr. Wigan is going to join us for the bus lease conversation. You have a memo in your packet, basically combining information into one summary.
Good evening, Terry. Thank you.
Good evening.
For being here.
You seem very far away in the table tonight.
I know.
I know. That's okay. Can you see?
I can.
From a visual, does it matter?
It's fine.
It's fine for on camera. Just speak loud.
He's really far away. It does seem like I'm far away from you.
That's okay.
We'll think close thoughts.
Terry, if I raise my voice, it's not because I'm yelling, it's because you're so far away.
I get it.
So I, can I start? We clearly had some bus issues this year. And so we asked some questions. We're still having some bus issues. And it may not be related to the lease. It may be related to the fact that we may not have enough buses or we may not have enough drivers. I don't know what it is, but just last Friday, there was, or maybe Monday, there was the combination of trips and things, you know, two weeks ago, people had to leave school early to go to Hollister. So we've raised some questions about this. And so the first thing was, when were the buses delivered? And is it the bus lease? But then it does lend to a bigger question of, do we have enough in our fleet? Right? We've spent a lot of time over the years looking at our sped van fleet, and I think we're in a better position, we're still continuing to maintain. We have not spent a lot of time on the buses. And maybe now it's a time to kind of look a little bit deeper. And maybe the number that we've been running is not enough. Right? And so I also understand that you can get as many buses as you want. If you don't have enough qualified drivers to drive them, that's a concern as well. But so I think this discussion is, one, about the lease, but also kind of a bigger picture on what our transportation in general.
Yeah. And I think you're right. I think this is going to be, this is going to be something that we're going to be reviewing periodically here for the next few months, particularly as we go into the budget process. But I think there's several things. That we had one bus that wasn't delivered on time, and we had multiple buses that when they were first delivered had issues and we had to send back and get those issues corrected. That was certainly an issue. But I don't know that it's necessarily, it's maybe a symptom of a bigger problem. Okay? And you've touched on one thing. I'm going to touch on another. But one thing is, I do think we need to evaluate what our fleet size needs to be so that we have the appropriate number of spare buses. Because one of the other issues, and I touched on it in my memo, is that we don't service our own fleet. And by not servicing our own fleet, that means that a lot of small problems that typically can be taken care of in the course of the day, between runs. Okay? That simply can't happen. We have to ship a bus out. And that means that bus has probably gone for a day, maybe two days. Okay? Whereas when you have your own mechanic, again, a lot of times these are air issues. And an air issue is an adjustment. But if you're shipping your bus out to someone, and I'm not maligning these independent mechanics, but they've got other people that they're servicing as well, so you're in a queue, just like at an auto mechanic that you bring your car to. And if you don't happen to be first in line in the queue, then you're not going to get your bus back in a timely fashion. So that is an issue. But it's a challenging issue because, again, when you have a budget that is tight, where are you going to allocate resources? Are you going to allocate it to direct instruction? I think we'd all agree that's where we want to try and put our money when we can. Or are we going to try and figure if there's a way that we could, for example, share somebody who could service buses and maybe also help out the town with additional service for their trucks? That may or may not be an option. But those are some of the things that I think we need to study. So the number of buses we have is something that does need to be examined. How we service our buses needs to be examined. I think certainly an issue that's been raised, and I'll put it out on the table now, is whether or not we would contract out for buses. Now, I will tell you, I have extensive background with both running my own buses and having contractors. And right now, I would tell you, I think it is, it's not something that we should avoid looking into. We should. But it's dangerous. It's dangerous on a twofold situation. There is a shortage of bus drivers nationwide. There's a shortage of bus drivers in every state, including Massachusetts. So the first thing you need to understand is that if you were to, let's say tomorrow, magically say, okay, we're going to contract out our bus service, that if your contractor has the contract of Small Millis and has a contract with, let's say, also Big Worcester, okay, and they need to service Big Worcester, they're going to do that at the expense of Small Millis. So that's one of the problems right now with the shortage of bus drivers in a macro sense. And can be a problem with contracting out. The second, and I told this story to Nancy, and I think she was a little incredulous when I told her, is last year, the town of Northwood, New Hampshire, had a contractor. And two days before school started, the contractor called them up and says, we can't do your buses anymore. We're breaking the contract. Now, the problem with that for Northwood is, not only did Northwood not have bus drivers, they didn't have buses. Because typically speaking, when you contract out for your bus transportation, you give up your buses as well. Now, you don't have to do that. We could, obviously, we could construct a bus contract where they own drivers, they own the management, but we still own the buses. But again, that becomes not necessarily as cost efficient to do it that way. But those are some of the risks that are out there. So I'm not saying we shouldn't look at it. We should always look at all of our options. But that's one of the things that is problematic in the transportation industry, school transportation industry right now in general, is really, you know, the three things, is the size of your fleet, the shortage of qualified drivers, and, you know, the idea of how you're going to take care of that fleet. Those are really the, I mean, you know, you take care of those three things, you're fine.
So thanks for the overview. So there is a couple of things about this lease. And I don't want to spend a lot of time, but you're the new guy, so, right? So you have the benefit of saying the contract was, there were issues with the contract. I mean, the fact that we were supposed to be getting buses on July 1st, and the majority of the buses were received in August.
Right.
That's a problem. There's not a lot that we can do about that now. We can only make a note going forward that the next contract, one, we have to execute it sooner than what we did this last time.
Correct.
And then we need to make sure we have these buses here, you know?
And.
And we have a dead, we have a July 15th, whatever it is, we can't, and I know it was July 1st in this contract, but we need to make sure the buses are here.
And I think one of the, there are some things we can do to try and help that process. I think I mentioned in my memo that that was an aggressive date, July 1st, when the bids didn't come in until April 24th. Because typically, if you're ordering buses from a manufacturer, it's a six-month lead time. So if we, for example, in January, February, really believe that there's a likelihood we're going to have a warrant article on the Springtown meeting to buy buses, then I would say, let's go out to bid there with an anticipated purchase. Because we can do that. We can actually go out to bid. We can have, we're bidding for an anticipated purchase. We can accept the bids. We can award to a bidder based on the outcome.
Of the vote.
Of the vote. And so once the vote takes place, then that bidder, we just called them up and say, guess what? We had, you know, town meeting yesterday, everything went fine, you know, let's get these buses. They in turn, because they know they've been the successful bidder for a number of weeks, they've already done some holding with the manufacturer. They haven't ordered the bus, but they've said, listen, I got the bid for these buses. We're pretty sure it's going to pass at the town meeting. So, you know, you need to make sure that I'm in your queue to get buses because I need to have them to Millis on July 1st, July 15th, whatever the date is we agreed to. So there are some things like that we can do in the future that will help. The other thing that I think certainly we have to do, and we really did this time around. I mean, we got a bus, when we got buses that weren't working properly, we sent them back. And we did get the vendor to fix them. And he did do that in a very timely fashion.
But the clock just started too late.
The clock started too late.
Right.
That was the problem. But, you know, I think that's one of the things is we have to reinforce at the, before the delivery process, back in the bid process, hey, we're expecting that, you know, you're going to get that bus from the manufacturer, you're going to go through all this stuff before we ever get it. We don't really, we don't expect to get a bus, ever, that has anything except something that is very, very superficial, minor, you know, that we can take care of by you coming on site and, you know, doing in two seconds.
So one thing that we're doing here, as you, because you've sat through several meetings, is that we're looking at strategic planning and we're strategic budgeting, and we're looking at different cost centers and different functions within the district. Transportation is one of them.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know if, I don't want to go through my papers, but the questions, I don't know if we asked these very specific questions. I think we did address, how many sped vans should we have? I think we said how many buses we should have. I think it may be a question. So I think during the natural progression of doing our strategic planning around transportation, I think some of those questions. I would like to explore the idea, at one point, we did have someone in the past who could do some of the light mechanic work here, and now he is since gone.
Yes.
So I can appreciate the fact that we don't want to take away from direct teaching, right? But we still have to keep the lights on and.
Exactly.
And the fields mode and the, you know, and the buses running. So there's still always going to be, in any district, a small amount of the money being spent to keep the infrastructure in place. I think we should maybe explore when the new finance director and the new cooperation that's going on between the schools and the districts is, I don't know what they're doing over there, but if there is somewhere where, even if we had a mechanic a couple of days a week, I don't know how it goes, but.
Well, and I do think, I will tell you, and I don't want to make them sound anything more than they were. I've had some very informal conversations with the public works director. He certainly could use some more mechanic time. We obviously could use some mechanic time. That's why I say I think there's some synergy there if we can figure it out. And so the figuring out is, of course, always figuring out how to fund it. But I don't think it's a situation where either one of us necessarily has to fund a full-time position.
Sure.
But we might have, be able to get a highly qualified mechanic that can do trucks and buses, you know, between us. And, you know, they certainly have the capacity to have a place for us to work on buses, and will have. So, I mean, I think those, that's a, that's a place where there's some synergy. So again, as part of, certainly my thought process, I think certainly Mayor James' process, our transportation director's process is, as we move forward, that's one of the things we really would like to look at and see if we can figure out how to make it work operationally.
So I would not self-edit. I would have that conversation. And if we, if you guys started to get closer to what this would actually look like with cost, I, let's bring it forward, let's bring it forward through the strategic planning process, and we can have that discussion. And then maybe it's not something we can do next year, but maybe it's, or maybe we find something this year, maybe we build it into next year. But I think it's, I think you're right. I think that's part of the problem is that, it sounds like some of these little issues
Right.
Probably could have been taken care of, but if they're going back to a big bus company that's doing hundreds of buses, it gets caught, like you said, in the queue.
And as I, and as I think I pointed out, in a long-term sense, if you have somebody, you can keep somebody, you get them trained properly, if it's a warranty issue, you can actually make money on the deal. You can pay for your mechanic. Because if they do warranty work on your new bus.
They get paid.
The manufacturer's going to pay for your mechanic's time.
So thank you for this. Any questions or any comments from anyone on the committee? So I think, I think this is helpful. We know what we need to do next time. And I think you're right. I think the next time we, the lease comes up, this is a five-year, five-year lease, we need, we need to have the conversation about, do we, do we just buy the buses or do we contract out? I mean, we've had this conversation about drivers as well, you know? So this is not the first time we'd be having this and/or conversation. So that's part of the conversation. But the other part is, what do we do now to make sure we're, we have enough buses in the meantime?
Yeah.
We can't wait for five years. If we don't have enough in the fleet, we have to figure out what that number is and figure out what we can do.
And that will be part of the work that we're doing, both with the vans and the big buses.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we did keep one more bus than we normally do this year.
Correct.
We did not turn back as, you know, usually we keep two. We've kept more of the older buses as spares, but again, so we were trying to plan for having an extra bus. The other thing that Terry has mentioned is perhaps it's time to start looking at a way that we can not lease, but actually have a cash purchase that has to be done correctly, but would involve some kind of fund that builds up over those five years so that then there's cash to pay. And then cash payment doesn't occur until everything is correct and received and the goods are as specified in the bid, so.
Well, but just look at what we did last year at the end of the year. We bought two vans. Not that I want to not do the vans, but if we, if we have a need for a big bus, that was 45, 48,000, right? Don't we use 24,000?
We use 24,000.
That's 48,000 right there.
Right.
So I'm not saying we ignore the vans, but maybe, maybe that's the more urgent need at the end of next year when we have, because we had significant end-of-the-year savings or money in that account that we could buy. So it's not out of the realm of possibility that we don't have to wait to the end of the lease, but maybe I'll do something about that next year.
No, absolutely.
This year.
And I think, and it's going to be a difficult transition, but I think the point that I was making is, and I'm sure everybody around the table knows this, the best way to buy anything is cash.
Cash is king.
Cash is king. And so if, if we can, and it will have to be gradual, but if we can gradually start to save up money for big buses as well as vans, but, and purchase them for cash and wean ourselves off of leases, we do two things. Is one, we get more leverage over the purchase. And two, quite frankly, we save interest. And that interest is not inconsiderable over the five years that you would typically lease a bus. So I think it's something that's not going to be easily done to get that conversion. But I think, again, as we think strategically, that is something that I think when we talk about our transportation system, it is something we want to talk about.
Did he spark anything? I look forward to the continued conversation. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jody, let the record show that we are fully.
In door.
And that door is, you cannot sneak in with that door. I was late.
No quiet entrance.
That's it for you, right? Do you have anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the chairman's report, the policy subcommittee, the middle school retention policy. This hasn't been around for too long.
Mr. Chair, I apologize, and we, given the short timeframe between last meeting and this meeting, I'd like to thank Ms. Norton for her hard work on this, the data analysis she did by hand, looked at all grade six report cards. And if the committee, because we did send it out at 3:00 today, if you need time to read the memo, the memo has also then the retention policy with new language or proposed new language attached. But if I may turn it over to Ms. Norton.
Sure. Yes, please do.
For a quick overview.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So over the past few weeks, we've been engaging in some really good discussion about this as a staff.
He tried. He tried.
So we've had some, some really good discussion about this as a staff, with you as a committee, lots of reflection last year at the end of the year, and this year on our process and decision-making around what constitutes end-of-the-year mastery of a course. So I did some data analysis using last year's sixth-grade report cards, keeping in mind really the two ways of looking at course completion or failure, if you will, and attempting to identify and apply, you know, sort of a traditional type of criteria to standards-based system. We had initially proposed looking at student end-of-the-year grades and counting their ratings on the standards within a course, and then using a percentage as a, as a benchmark or a cutoff for passing or failure. The athletic eligibility policy uses an alternate method that involves averaging the standards for a course, the ratings. And so I applied both, and we analyzed which would make the most sense. And in the end, we felt that consistency of language was important. If the athletic eligibility policy was using an average, that was a factor. We also looked at the students who are identified using each method, both the number of students and who they were as individuals. And so we have come with a recommendation tonight to use the method of averaging, which is used for athletic eligibility. So in the memo is information, some of the statistics, some of the data that we found when going through all of the 103 sixth-grade report cards from last year, just to see what impact this would have and what the result would be if we applied both of those methods. And essentially, using an average of the end-of-the-year ratings, we would have about 15% of our students that we would identify, that we would need to look at and determine whether or not we would consider retention, whether or not we would require summer, some kind of summer program or summer learning opportunity.
Yes, go ahead.
Wait, can you just walk us, I'm trying on the first set. So the number of ratings at a three and a four were less than 50% of the total rating.
Wait, can you just walk this, I'm trying to, on the first set, so, the number of ratings at a three and a four were less than fifty percent of the total rated, total ratings for content area, so that's.
That was our initial proposal, that students would get threes and fours in at least fifty percent of the standards in a content area.
If it was that, this is what.
So if it was that, those are the results. And then we looked at this, similarly, if we were looking at sixty percent.
Oh, I get it. So, if it was that, thirty-three students, thirty-two percent would have.
So we, explain.
Would have essentially been considered potentially failing one course.
Correct.
So why, why sixty percent? So the second book.
Because we had discussed at the last meeting that our traditional criteria was a student needed a sixty percent in a course to pass. So we.
So you're saying the number of ratings at level three and four were less than sixty percent of the total ratings for a content area?
So if we use that as a criteria, that they had to have, sixty percent of the ratings need to be threes or fours.
Okay.
Then that would be the number of students we'd identify.
So in the case of it being fifty, in the fifty percent, of the thirty-three students who would have, who would have been subject.
Potentially.
Potentially. Fifteen of the, of them did receive.
We were already providing support.
So twenty-two of the, twenty-two of the thirty-three were getting, so, so it would have had an additional impact of eleven students.
Right.
And then, and it would have been an additional four students if it was. And just to clarify one thing, in terms of consistency with the athletic policy, so the athletic policy is, the two-point-oh is for the first and second trimester?
Mm-hmm.
The third trimester is a three-point-oh?
Yes.
Three?
We allowed for the building up from, from the first and second to the third.
So if we were gonna be consistent, then it would need to be a three.
At the end.
At the end.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So with that in mind, if you look at, when I talk about fifty percent, that would be equivalent to an average of two-point-five.
Right.
So actually, I'd have to go back and average all of those again to find out, you know, the data for that, if we're looking at a three, but it would be significantly higher.
Right. So.
So.
I don't think we have to go, I think we, I don't think we need that data. I think they, I mean, the answer is, you know, we're right now at thirty-two percent impacted if it was, if it was a fifty percent, which is two and a half, that's thirty-two percent of the students, and we had eleven of them would have been, it would have been students that aren't already, weren't already identified. So theoretically, it would be higher than eleven that fall into, oh, didn't have an average of two.
By tiered support, we mean school year support.
No, I, no, that I, yeah. But I'm just saying, so it was thirty-three, it's gonna be some number higher than thirty-three if we raise the bar up to three instead of.
Right. So typically, Maureen, in, say, let's take last summer, how many students participated in summer school or summer tutoring or summer coursework of some sort for the middle school?
So, within the special education program, students that had summer services on their IEPs.
Well, I think.
Because those are included in this data too, because they were sixth graders, so they were receiving those report cards.
So if we have two groups, students on IEPs, because.
So there were four students who did summer coursework, either attended a summer, summer school program in another town that provides a program, or did summer coursework that we mandated and provided.
So four students, and then the students whose IEPs require continuation so as not to regress over the summer.
So I, I have.
And that's for, for grade levels, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, so approximately one per grade level.
So beyond the summer students, what about the eleven students, and what about the seventeen, four students?
Yep.
So, we, we're talking about a policy now, right? But now.
I understand.
Those eleven students, what should, what should have happened with them? Should they have been on tiers of support?
So when we look back now, this is a good exercise for us, and it was something that we had intended to do once we had enough information. When I went to the teachers with this, because they know those students best, and they looked at who we were talking about, they were on everybody's radar. They just were not in a, a supported class, or they weren't receiving, you know, additional tutoring or specialized instruction of any sort, but it wasn't like they weren't staying after school with the teachers, getting extra help, staying for homework clinic, things like that. But, you know, I would suggest we need to do a good job of identifying those kids in the following year, providing support or requiring summer services.
So even if we were just going down to the next level, on the sixty, the numbers.
We would have more students.
Get, and that's where we're at now, right? The sixty is kinda, isn't the sixty percent where we were, we were at, at the failing grade, right?
For traditional.
For traditional, right, for traditional.
If we were doing a percentage basis.
Remember, we couldn't figure out why, why we could get sixty percent. So, but the numbers are.
That was the old policy, was sixty percent was considered passing.
So, but, policy aside, there's still a problem with possibly, either flowing under the radar screen or not being, not being captured in the tiers of support numbers, meaning they're not formally recognized in tiers of support, right? If they're, if they're being kept after school and the teachers are working with them, I know, how about tiers of support? I don't know exactly when someone gets considered being in the program or whatever, whatever you wanna say.
So when we identify someone for tiered support or referral for special education evaluation or anything like that, we consider as many data points as possible, including standardized testing, MCAS scores, including, we do universal screening with STAR for reading and math, which is an assessment we do three times a year. So that flags students for us, and we, you know, are constantly moving kids in and out of support, or, you know, monitoring their progress to see, are we making a difference? And if not, do we need to provide more support? So, end-of-the-year grades would be another data point that we would consider. So, you know, I'd had a short window of time to do this, but certainly those students are ones that now we have MCAS data, we'll be looking at that, we'll be looking how they did on our STAR screening two weeks ago, and then putting those services in place.
But I, maybe I didn't say my question right. So those, the students that you identified and you went and talked to, like, oh yeah, we're already working with them, we're doing this extra work, they're staying after school, wouldn't that be, shouldn't they be considered as part, part of the tiers of support program now?
Perhaps.
So, these numbers may not be, the delta may not be as bad, right? It may, I'm trying.
I see what you're saying, it's not like, yeah.
I don't know. I'm, I'm kind of asking, but also suggesting that.
Well, so the tiered system of support that we have in place is sort of formalized, right? So we look at data points and we identify students and we put them in groups and we provide targeted intervention in their areas of need. And so some of the students that didn't fall in that are kids who, when we look at it, there could have been a variety of things going on in their, in their lives, in, you know, I don't, it's confidentiality here, so I don't wanna go into detail, but there were situations and circumstances that perhaps, you know, they had a bad trimester or something, so their end of the year.
And one of the things Maureen talked about, and I talked about when she was analyzing and bringing this data, is that we would like to, in this budget cycle, and maybe even right now for fiscal year nineteen, look at increasing our tiers because of the fact that there are a percentage of students that may not be receiving additional support that could. And we have, you know, maybe a couple of staff members whose hours we could increase for not a lot of money, and expand how many students we're serving in tiers. So it's one of our, you know, yes, planning ahead for FY20, but even in FY19, this made us realize that I think we can beef up what we're doing in the tiers program. And it's gotten better and better over the years, but right now, it's just a matter of personnel and how many hours we can afford for them to, to work.
So originally, back when we met about this, back, the first time we all sat, I think the original proposal on it was fifty percent at two, three, and four. And we had discussions about two being, whether or not two should be included. And so, having it not included, and now that you've kinda gone through this, does it, and when you looked at the fifty percent and the sixty percent, did either one of them feel like, wow, this is way too, way too stringent? Or, so when you looked at, and you found out who those eleven kids were, you looked at that and you found, oh, they were on the, they were kind of already on the radar. But then when you went to sixty, did you find you were pulling in an additional six kids who, everybody looked at you and said, there's absolutely no reason that this, you know, like, so there's probably a percentage that's too high.
Right.
You know?
Yep.
So, so when you looked at, like, did the fifty feel right? When you got to sixty, were you still saying, oh, you know what, yeah, these are probably so, so do we need to keep looking of, how far do we need to advance? Or, or was the, or does this fifty seem like a, it gets to the right place?
Right. So, we initially proposed looking at two, three, and four based on limited other districts who are doing this work at this level, and what they were doing. And what I found was a few that, the few that I could find that had a policy such as this, included two. When we talked about, you know, raising the bar a little bit and making sure that we were, we had high expectations, we started looking at just three and four, what kind of impact would that have? I would say that using the average and using the two-point-oh as a benchmark, none of the individuals that we flagged would have been a surprise in terms of needing support to be successful in school. When we started to get to fifty percent, there were, there were a few, because I recorded specific individuals, and there were a few that, you know, warranted a second look and a discussion with last year's teachers, what, what went on here. There was some, when I looked at that data, when I looked at what courses they were, there was some correlation between math and science. So if there was a, a challenge in math, there was also a challenge in science. There was a, definitely, I could, you know, I can't give you a statistical analysis, but I could see, jeez, this is happening a lot. There's a math-science correlation here. So what do we need to look at in terms of providing sort of math-science support? Because right now, we have tiers in math, and we have tiers in reading. And last year was the very first year the middle school ever had reading tiered support, had an individual to provide that support, and I think it made a difference. So, you know, like Nancy said, I think we definitely can always do a better job of, you know, supporting everybody in, in getting to the highest level possible.
So, I just have a, a few questions. So, absent the request from this committee last week for this kind of evaluation, how would we have identified these fifteen individuals that may need a higher level of support than what they were getting? So if we're, if we're saying, we're forcing the issue of mastery under the standard-based report card system. So we've implemented, implemented a system where we had no way of determining at what level does a student need additional support over the summertime? So it's been, so, three years, fifth grade, sixth grade, this is the third year that this program has been at the middle school. And it was a request from one of the committee members, if I'm remembering correctly, to have this data pulled as part of this retention policy discussion. So I have a concern that in that two-year timeframe, that under this new model, that there have been students, so we know we have fifteen just based on the look at the end of last year in sixth grade. So I have a concern that there are kids that haven't been identified, and then, equally as important, what, what are we doing to ensure that students that need the support, especially with, with the guidelines that we're proposing, are gonna get it and not just at the end of the year? So, in, in all of the information that's been shared about standard-based report, reporting and grading, is that it is highly dependent upon teacher feedback and constant communication and all of that. So, having some numbers here in black and white just raises some concern, and I know I've used that word a few times, some concern and question about if that constant feedback is actually happening, how did we have fifteen individuals that weren't on support or weren't getting services? I guess I'll leave it there.
So, I would have to go back again and look exactly at those fifteen. My sense was that those were students that, it was social studies, or it was science, where we don't have a specific program for tiers of support. We have math, and we have reading, and only just last year did we have a staff member who were able to provide that. I think that we are always, teachers are in a cycle of reviewing student data and looking at student work, meeting with parents, providing extra help after school, using homework clinic. We use high school tutors, we match kids up with high school tutors all the time, so, I mean, I'd, I'd look at those individuals and try and get some more as to what did we do last year for them and what are we doing right now to ensure that, you know? And, you know, one of the things that we know is that kids learn at different rates. So it, it's quite possible that we could have done a lot of things for a lot of students and, and still at the end of the year, they might just not quite be at mastery level yet, but that doesn't mean they're not gonna get there. And a lot of the skills standards, say in ELA or in math, are on a continuum from fifth grade, you know, up, well, K to twelve, really. And so it doesn't mean that if they haven't demonstrated a complete mastery by the end of, say, fifth grade, they're not gonna go back and review and revisit all those skills again in sixth grade, and again in seventh, you know?
So, sorry, Mr. Chair, I'll ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead, yep.
Okay, so I wrote a couple of them down. So, are there things, so I, from a support perspective, if we don't have support in social studies and if we don't have support in science, if we have students that fall into those categories where that's where they actually need the support, then how do we support them?
The teachers do working lunches, they provide extra help after school, they're here in the morning before school, and they have kids come in. Students are able to, if they don't do well on an assessment or an assignment, they're able to get some, you know, review, reinforcement, reteaching. In small groups within the classroom, they set up station rotation, or they, they build it into their daily. it into their daily, you know, planning or their weekly planning, depending on what group of students needs what, and they, and they build that support in that way. That's tiers within the classroom, so there are three levels of tiers. Tier one is within the classroom, and that's given, you know, essentially with, by the classroom teacher plan. So I think it gives a false impression that nothing was done, that, that those students just kind of went through the year without anything and that nobody was looking at them at all.
I totally see that. I think, I think what it, what it does is, at the, at the, the way I read it is, at the end of the year, that they, not necessarily throughout the course of the year, but at the end of the year, from an evaluation perspective, that there was, you know, there's 15 that may have
Right.
coursework over the summer, or summer school, or something like that, that could have been in the mix for that kind of discussion.
And that's what I think we're trying to, to figure out now and to solidify our, you know, common understanding of this. We're sort of pioneers in this. There isn't a precedent, there isn't a model out there that says, and every district does it different. I was at a principals' meeting this morning with 15 middle school principals, all of which are talking about standards-based, many of which are at different points of implementation, and there's not really a common way of doing it, so to speak. It's what's right for your district, what's right for your school and your population. So, again, we're, we're trying to work with you and with, as we work through it, and it's a constant cycle of implementation, reflection, action, you know, tweaking, changing, revising as needed, and cycling back again, and still making sure that our students are getting what they need and held to high standards. It's the reporting out. We're really not changing anything that we've been doing in the past. It's, it's the reporting out and the benchmarking of it that we're, you know, sort of trying to compare apples and oranges. And, you know, in the past, 60% was failing, and if a student ended the year with a 60 average, that's when we would discuss, what do we do about summer and consider retention? But if a student had a 61 or a 62, you know, and, and when we look at traditional grades, what does that really tell you about that student? So, we feel like we can look at a standards-based report card and get a better overall sense of understanding and, and level of knowledge and mastery, just by sort of glancing at the big picture and all of the ratings and all of the standards. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, it does. Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, one of the things I would ask is, as we embark on large implementations and changes like this, that we would identify at the outset, large things like this. So I would ask that, you know, as we go forward, that we make those decisions prior to rolling something out, and I totally appreciate and understand and agree with the implementation, review, and adjustment, but we, we, we had no policy out of the gate. So we haven't been doing that review out of the gate. And I would like us to ensure that we have some of those large student-impacting decisions and executed prior to a rollout. So, so now that we have this information, are we going to work on a plan going forward to review data like this at the end of a year?
Oh, absolutely, at the end, yes.
Or, I'd be interested to learn, it doesn't have to be tonight, but as, as you, as you
to see whether they qualify for. And then, we do progress monitoring and benchmarking along the way, so that, that's three times a year, and some kids might stop needing tiers and some might enter needing more support, say, mid-year or something like that. So that's Right, it's a flexible model, and we put supports in place when any time, any time during the year that a student demonstrates need, for whatever reason. But we do at the end of the year, because we administer STAR in the beginning of June again, and we look at grades at that point, and the teachers make observations and ident, make recommendations. So as we're planning for September,
Okay.
we had students immediately from day one receiving support based on
Okay.
how they ended the year and, and their STAR scores, and if we had MCAS data in time, we would have used that too. But now that we have it, we're making adjustments right now and making some changes to what we're doing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So, whenever, I'm always cautious, whenever I try and look at a formula or, or way to, to analyze something or to
Quantify.
Right, that, I always try and get buy-in on the assumptions and the concept first, before running the model to see what the results would be. And I do that at work because a lot of times what will happen is, people will have an idea of what the right answer should be, and so if they know what the answer is going to come to be, then they'll go try and plug holes in the, in the assumptions because they're going to try and tweak the assumptions to get to where they want the answer to be. So, I kind of go back to, as we're looking at this, it comes down, and we, I, we asked this question last week, and it's, how many, how much of this, how many of the standards should a student have mastered, which is a three, because we don't have halves, we, you know, it's, it's a three, by the end of the year in order to have learned enough or have mastered enough that we're comfortable moving them to the next grade? So, you know, I think we, you know, we threw in the baseline of 50%. I guess I'd be interested to know why it shouldn't be 50%. And if 50% is the right number, and yes, it means that 33 of those students would have been in that spot last year and it would have been had discussion, well, then that's what it means.
Mm-hmm.
And, but it's not that the 50% is wrong or we should alter it, it's that, no, this is what it really means. I haven't, so, I guess that's kind of where I'm, I'm looking for. If people think that 50% isn't the, the right one, then what's the, what is that percentage and, and why?
Can you mention that to the administration, right?
Who's that? I'm asking it to anybody, anybody
Okay, so I, I will, I will be the first one to say, I do not feel qualified at all to say what the right number is, because I don't know what is considered mastery level and what standards, so, so, just because it's going to the whole group, that, that is absolutely my opinion. I, I, I am not at all qualified to make any comment on what, what, what is enough. I would defer that absolutely to the administration.
You, you signing on to Denise's statement?
Sure.
Robin?
No, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I would say I don't know either. We don't know how many standards there are and how many in each subject there are, and we're not in the room to know that answer.
So there's a different number for each subject area, and there's a different number at different grade levels. It's based on what the priority standards identified were for each subject, so it varies. When I had the discussion with teachers, they felt at least 50% should be mastered in order for a student to have enough information, enough skill level to go on to the next level, which is why we started with that. Again, when I did research on other schools that have standards-based grading at this level, most of the retention policies don't have a benchmark in them, they don't have a number, they don't have a cutoff, they don't have a percentage. They simply say it's based on a team decision and the whole child. For whatever reason, I think it's, it's a challenge to do that. When, we don't want to compare letter grades to ratings, but if you read Robert Marzano, who's sort of the guru of standards-based grading, if push comes to shove, all threes are all As according to that model, that, that philosophy, which is why a two is sometimes considered, you know, progressing, you're, you, they're, all different language, progressing, approaching. If you use MCAS language, it's called partially meeting standards. So it's, sometimes it's the semantics that throws us. And if you're progressing, are you really close to a three? Are you, or far away from a three?
So threes or As on what scale? One to three?
One to four. If you, if you
So what is a four?
Above
A plus.
Well, and, but, I hesitate to say that because I don't want to throw that
Well, what does the book say? What does he say?
It doesn't. It just says, if you
So he talks about a scale of one to four, but doesn't acknowledge fours?
Fours would be above and beyond grade level standards. So if you're really pushing, you know, to kind of make sense of it according to the, you know, the gurus in this area, a three means you are exactly, you have done everything you need to do to demonstrate that you know and can do the skills that
Mastery, mastery, right?
are necessary for mastery. You know, I don't, it's, it's a tough comparison, though, and it's, you know.
So forget the numbers, but why would we, why would we not want mastery for all of our students?
We do.
Right?
Of course.
And they get there.
Well, but this discussion is about
And I think the tough part
This discussion is about retention. This discussion is about a, a, a grading system that you have put in place, right? So we, we do have to talk about the numbers.
Absolutely.
We didn't bring this up. This was brought up because we've made a change
Right.
in our system. So the number conversation, it was not initiated by this side of the table necessarily, it was, this is, this is what we have to do.
Right.
So, I know we're struggling with 50% or is that the right number? I'm not an expert either, but if three is mastery, right? I'm not sure I'd be comfortable with anything less than 50%. That just doesn't feel right at all. Let's have it philosophical, you're talking about the, the doctor who's talking about this. Why are we not looking for 100% threes?
I think we are. I think we are, but the reality is all children learn at different rates. And so we're trying to put that mastery within a timeframe that might not be right for every child.
Right.
So I think if we need, if we look at a, a bigger timeframe, by, you know, we want all kids to graduate with, you know, a minimum or maximum amount of knowledge and skill. Some kids, it, it doesn't happen within the timeframe of a school year.
Sure.
And others are faster.
And I'm not talking about fours, I'm talking about threes.
But we're still operating in that, you know, in that timeframe system. So
So the
We do want them all.
I will echo Denise's earlier point. That number of people, the 15 with no support, right, and I was trying to, trying to get at whether
Where are there, can you, what are the 15 with no support?
So 30, 33 students, right? 15 received tiered support, seven received
So that's 22.
22, so that's 11.
Yeah.
And, and then I, oh, I was looking at the 21, but that's a subset, so there was another four.
So, but as Maureen mentioned, there's, tiered support is defined during the school day with a triangulation of data. That doesn't mean they're not getting support.
And that's why I was asking, I was, I was trying to help.
Okay.
I was trying to, I was trying to help and say, they're, they're just not being classified. Don't assume mal-intent
Yes.
on my questions, please.
Thank you. So, but I just, you know, I just don't want the public to think that there are 15 students per grade level out there that aren't receiving support. And when we do our MCAS scores in a couple of weeks, and you'll see that in general, Milis students overall are, are between 6 and 22% above the state averages in terms of kids in meeting and partially meeting, so, so the
So they're not receiving, it's not that they're not receiving support, but maybe they need to be designated in the tiers of support, because
Yeah, Chris
you stated they need to be designated in the tiers of support because you stated yourself, without this exercise, you, some of these, the numbers, your own words were, I didn't, some of it, I don't want to say shocked, but you were looking at these numbers and saying, there were more than, there were people on the radar screen that, or people that may have not been on the radar screen.
Didn't get a formalized program.
Yes.
Whenever we do any kind of assessment of a student, whether it's the teacher's grading the students, whether it's the STAR screening, whether it's MCAS, whenever we do any kind of assessment and we analyze that data, there are always students who are flagged that we say, hmm. And then we need to look deeper as to why, as to why they're in that category or why, why they're getting our attention. And oftentimes there's a variety of reasons and sometimes, you know, like I said, it could be a bad day when they took the assessment. It could be feeling ill. It could be medical reasons during a trimester, so the grades are lower than maybe they normally would be. It could be, you know, social, emotional things going on. There's a variety of things that impact how a student does during the school day to receive these ratings, to do their assignments, to take their assessments. You know, it's not a cut and dried system unfortunately. So we're constantly looking for these kinds of students that might, we don't want anyone to fall through the cracks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Because I just have a question kind of on this concept, because Nancy brought it up last week at one point. He mentioned again that this idea of, you know, one of the struggles about standard-based grading is fitting into the existing school year timeframes that exist. I'm not suggesting it's advocating for this, but is the utopia of a standards-based grading system and learn at individual paces, is that there are no grades that you just move through or go to school for 10 years and take an MCAS exam or, and then if you pass, you pass and if you don't?
There are systems competence, some states are moving much more toward competency-based systems, New Hampshire being one of them. In the Globe article that we were highlighted in, there's an example of Salem, a school in Salem where they have ungraded early childhood and students progress. I know about high schools, the one in Air, the Parker Charter School is a totally ungraded high school. So you meet your criteria, you show proficiency by meeting those criteria and you progress. There are many nationwide, not very many in Massachusetts. And actually Massachusetts is a little bit behind in some of the, behind some of the New England states in looking at competency-based education in general. Doesn't have to be ungraded, but the age groupings are sort of arbitrary, you know, this, this model of education because within any age group, there's a wide variation.
And I would suggest, Mr. Conroy, that it's not just standards-based, that the timeframe doesn't always work for a child, it's traditional too.
Oh, yeah, no, I, no, I get that, but I think part of, or go is that the, we're looking at this and part of, and I'll speak for myself, part of it is, okay, I'm trying to find a, there is a, we do have a timeframe and there are things in our school system and in the public education school system, and we do have grades. So there are, have historically been milestones, whatever you want to think of the traditional milestones, but there were milestones marked with grades that had to be achieved by certain points in time. And through the discussions we've been having and what I'm reading, one of the core issues is trying to find a way to allow students to learn at their own pace. But inherently what that means is if you're not going to ever, if you're not going to draw a line in the sand of they have to learn this by X timeframe, they don't work well together because there's a, there's a idea and a push that if they don't learn it in sixth grade, well, then we need to teach it to them when they're in seventh grade versus, no, leave them in the same classes that they're in until they learn it and then they move on. And it's this, I feel this pull and push between somehow in the background, try keeping them caught up on the stuff they didn't get to begin with while we're teaching them new stuff instead of keeping them in one place till they learn everything that they're supposed to learn, then moving them on. And I guess that's.
And a logical, yeah, I agree with you logically that that, you know, seems to make sense when we think about the whole child and what the impact of that is. And I spent 30 years of my life in special education where students would move to the next grade level, but we're trying to remediate. At the same time, we're trying to, you know, work on grade level skills if we can and try and mesh the two together and help a student move forward and make progress as much as possible. And it's tricky. It's tricky for a teacher to do that. Like Nancy said, I think in a true competency-based model, we do, we erase the bells and we erase the timeframes and we allow the students to move at their own pace and some are going to move really quickly. We let them and we have the provisions to do that. We're, we're not quite, we're working towards getting better at that and, and, I can't say where we'll be 10, 15, 20 years from now in terms of that, but there are, the state of Maine went completely competency-based. So students are on their own learning paths and like you said, they move at their own pace and they take an, I think, an exit exam or something at the end. Rhode Island's doing a lot of that too. They're a little bit at the forefront of that movement, but that's a bigger conversation for another day.
All right, let's, go ahead.
Mr. Chair. So I just have a question and hopefully this will circle back to me concluding this. So I was just wondering at the end here, you said that based on the data, you want to recommend, your recommendation here for averaging, demonstrating mastery for the average of a 2.0 by the end of the year. So you looked at the athletic thing that we had voted on last week and I was just wondering why we couldn't just put for the third trimester, to look at that third trimester grade for the retention policy as we did in that.
The athletic one?
In the athletic one. And I guess I'd like to see, or was curious if it was possible to get the data for the third trimester kind of separated out. Are they, are these 33 students, are they moving towards, you know, or did they have ones in the beginning and are they moving towards that?
So some of the standards are graded each trimester?
Yeah.
And some are only graded in one particular trimester?
Okay.
So what I did was to take the final grade for that standard.
So these are the third trimester?
So it was only rated in trimester one, then I concluded the trimester one.
That makes it tough, right? That's sort of.
Right, because that's the end rating of a standard.
Right, well, and that goes, again, that goes to, and I actually, I made a note because I, those frequently asked questions that got handed out at the middle school, but it goes to that concept of a standard that's only reported on in trimester one. In a true, in the standards-based competency model, would be continued on for that student if they didn't have a three for the rest of the year with the intention that they would be at a three by the end of the year, but we're not reporting on, we're not reporting every semester. Although what I noted in the frequently asked questions, and I had a question, it says, report cards are going to start being updated. I didn't know if that means we're going to go back in time and adjust the one reporting period, which I have some questions about.
So what we had, so what we talked about as a staff is just what you were saying. So we had a couple of options. We could leave all the boxes open all year long and teachers could report out on every single standard each trimester. Or we could look at it as a living document during the school year. So if a student got a one or a two first trimester, yet had a chance to revisit, redo, retake, receive some additional instruction and demonstrated a three by the end of the year, the teacher would have the opportunity to go back and change that before the final report card at the end of the year. So the last report card would be the final ratings, even the, even if the box was only, you know, open for the first trimester, but with the caveat that there had to be a comment on the report card that said, you know, student was able to demonstrate mastery of a trimester one, this content and communication with the parent that that had changed.
If I can take the opportunity and take the opinion, it's my audit opinion, just in my own audit frame of mind, I would much rather see grades carried into multiple trimesters as opposed to going back and changing the first trimester box in June. I would rather see, personally, I think it's, it shows more that it was progression and it did happen over a period of time. If we, if they got a two in the first one and they, but they got the three in the second trimester, or maybe it's two, two, three, I would, the idea of going back and changing what was distributed and what parents saw and what was their performance and rating in a given time period, to go back and just have living documents on that, I, I don't know. That's my own personal opinion.
Because if someone doesn't put a note in, then you have a problem of tracking when it was changed and why it was changed. I mean, you run the risk if your sole way of identifying a change is the note, right? Because someone may not even look for that. The parent also may not look for that. They may not know to go back to that, to that first trimester. I agree, I agree with Mark, just from a consistency. And it also demonstrates the growing, the growth. I think that helps. That tells the story probably better than just changing the first trimester.
There were a number of things that went into discussing that. One of them a little bit logistical, but we can certainly talk about doing that.
So I, for the sake of moving the conversation, there is a policy on the next page, but I also think that the policy is based on the first, the last paragraph on the first page, which is not accurate based on the conversation we had last week. We use the minimum average of three by the end of the school year and we used 50% of the standard.
We didn't have an average.
I'm sorry. Three or four.
Majority.
And majority. Three or four and 50% of standards in any, in any subject at the end of the year. The majority, did we say majority?
It says.
Look at the Google.
I got it right here.
Achieve grade level mastery in parentheses three and a majority of standards in all subjects.
Majority.
Any student who doesn't achieve this may utilize summer school, summer offerings to gain mastery level in order to participate in the fall. So I think what we'd be doing is replacing on the second page, the third paragraph that says students receiving standards-based, it would say, students receive standards-based ratings must achieve a three in a majority of standards in the subject. For a course on the report card at the end of the school year.
Must achieve a, you said.
Must achieve grade level mastery in a majority of the, of standards identified for a course on the report card at the end of the school year.
Achieve grade level mastery in.
A majority.
A majority of standards.
In all subjects.
Identified for, no, because what this is saying is the mastery of a single course. So it would say.
Yep, I'm with you.
So it's, the full language is say, students receiving standards-based ratings must achieve grade level mastery three in a majority of standards identified for a course on the report card at the end of the school year.
So paragraph three under policy 5.2.2 would say, students receiving standard-based ratings must achieve grade level mastery three parentheses in parentheses, in a majority of standards identified for a course on the report card at the end of the year. Was that correct, Mark?
Yes.
So that, is that the only change people want to make to policy 5.2.2?
We talked about the word mastery and so in paragraph four, it says if a student fails to demonstrate mastery, are we going to keep with that word?
If we're using it above, yeah, I mean, why, I'm questioning.
We're defining what mastery is.
Yes, we defined it above.
We define, yep. We're defining mastery of course to be a three in a majority of the standards.
So you want to put parentheses three next to demonstrate mastery?
Well, I think once you establish it up top in that third paragraph, we can, we can put it down below. So that's, that is the policy change. Do we want to, do we want to move to, do we want to move for a reading where we could waive the first and go for the second? What do we, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I would make a motion that we waive the first reading of policy 5.2.2.
Second.
Motion then moved and seconded to waive the first reading of the middle school mastery of course standards policy 5.2.2. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So the first wave, the first reading is waived. I would take a motion to commence the second reading.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we have this second reading of proposed policy 5.2.2.
Second.
Motion then moved and seconded to read or to start the second reading of middle school mastery of course standards policy 5.2.2. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, motion carries.
I'll read it. So, proposed policy 5.2.2, middle school mastery of course standards. A variety of information is gathered to determine successful course completion. Classroom measures of content and skills, performance tasks and observations provide information relative to mastery of course standards. The following represents criteria for successful course completion. Students receiving traditional grades must demonstrate a year-end average of 60% or better in a course. Students receiving standards-based ratings must achieve grade level mastery three in a majority of standards identified for a course on the report card at the end of the school year. If a student does not demonstrate successful course completion, then the student will either successfully complete a summer school course or a school-designed instructional program, which may include tutoring in the content area at the discretion of the principal. If a student fails to demonstrate mastery of the content and skills of two or more courses, then the student will be considered for retention. Additional promotion retention, and then that's, so that's the policy.
Any additional comments? The one, I know it's not, it's not open for a vote, but the handbook language, I don't think it's in the school committee is committing to that. I think it's the Milis Public Schools, right? It's not just us.
That was taken from the MASC language, so, yeah, we can change that.
It's proposed language. I think, I think it's the Milis Public Schools. Unless you want to personalize it to the middle school, the Milis Middle School, it's up however you want to.
Milis Public Schools are committed or the Milis Public School District is committed?
However you want to.
Okay.
Dramatically, I just, it doesn't, it's not just us. Any other comments on this?
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Was the retention part finished? I'm sorry.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That's the second, the second reading has been done.
This, may I suggest that we vote the approval of the replacement handbook language tonight as well, so that then the handbook can be complete.
So before we vote that, and, and people can, it'll give people a second to read it, should we, I didn't necessarily want to put it in the policy, but should we acknowledge feedback to parents for students who are, who fall into this, this area of, so someone may not be retained, right? I, I get that and we don't retain, according to the superintendent, you, we don't retain people. But are, are, is everyone who's potential there, are their parents being informed at the end of the school year? Is that, is there communication, not just in the form of a report card, but some sort of personalized communication, face-to-face email?
I would suggest from my knowledge that the students that you are questioning that weren't receiving tiered support officially or IEPs, yes, their parents have been contacted.
So all 33?
There's conferences and, and team meetings and emails and.
So during the course of the year and at the end of the year when the final grades are, okay, right. Did everyone review the language? Are we good with that language? It's, it's, go ahead, Mark.
So in the one, two thirds paragraph from, third sentence from the end, the primary reason for retention should be failure to demonstrate adequate progress toward mastery of grade level course content. Because I don't think it should say mastery. Well, maybe it should, because we define mastery as a majority of a three. So I think we should strike adequate progress because that's, that's a two.
Yeah.
And because mastery is not achieving 100% three, it still allows for two, so you don't have to, you don't have to have mastered everything. So in the, in the intent of a student can be making progress towards less, you know, 50% or less of it can still be the twos. But if we say adequate progress towards, then we're opening it up to be interpreted as twos.
That makes sense. So we'll strike adequate progress toward, and then, so those are the only two edits. Take a motion for the proposed language?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion to approve the middle school handbook language for additional promotion retention language as amended.
Second.
Motion been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Maureen, before you go, how's the survey coming?
I will, we're working on revising it based on your suggestions and we will get it to ASC.
You think we could get it out in the next couple of weeks? You think that's possible?
Yeah.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks for coming here.
Help in getting us through this.
Yeah, thank you.
Next is the subcommittee report. The elementary school building committee. Miss Gibbons, anything to report?
Since we just met last week, nothing new except for our continued good progress on the building.
Do we make progress on the building over the, over the week?
We did and they were there on the weekend, too, so, yeah, they're still doing.
Thank you.
We'll have more updates at our next meeting. We have a meeting in a few minutes.
That's fine. We'll, we'll put it on there and if there's nothing to report, there's nothing to report.
Okay.
Okay, moving into correspondence.
Mr. Chair.
The superintendent.
There's a flyer from the Safe Coalition featuring a presentation by Michael Botticelli, who's the executive director of the Greken Center for Addiction at Boston Medical Center at the Franklin Country Club on October 17th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Are we, are we going to have the working session in Capitol Plan?
Completely up, if.
No, I'm saying, are you prepared?
Um, no.
We're not prepared.
No. Well, and I apologize, I thought, I forgot to ask John and Terry to stay for that.
I was wondering why he was leaving. Okay, um, we have to.
We're meeting Capitol Plan, we're meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, we're meeting tomorrow. That's fine. We can, we, we're going to be fine. We're going to talk about our warrants. We're going to lay out the.
Is there a possibility of just meeting a few minutes bef- well, the warrants didn't change and.
No, the warrants didn't change.
So FinCom has those to just meet a few minutes beforehand.
Well, I'm not worried about FinCom. Yeah, what, it's 6:30?
6:30 with the CPC.
So I think it's just the concern that we're supposed to submit our five-year look ahead and do we, do we have a good idea of what should be on there? Not that we don't have a chance to amend it, but if this is going to, for the purpose of informing the Millis community of what's coming up for capital improvements, we should have a, again, it doesn't have to be perfect, but we should have a good idea of what's on that list.
Is the, is the, the five-year plan is, the FinCom is just for the warrants?
Yes.
The five-year plan is for the CPC. Is the CPC producing a bigger plan that's going to go to the FinCom?
I don't know if we know exactly what is, what we're using the plan, it's going to be presented, but it's, it's to have a bigger picture of the capital needs of the town, so we can start prioritizing where money goes and to get ahead of, hey, all of a sudden we need to, and not to say that, we need to replace a roof next year and then people, and I'm not saying, I'm just using that as an example, but then, you know, the people at the town meeting say, well, how come we always get, you know, how come we never hear these things in advance?
So, so from a logistical standpoint, actually, two questions. Did we update, because the last time the plan was presented, it was almost exclusively facilities. Did we add transportation, technology?
Transportation and networking, yes.
What about the regular technology piece?
The regular technology is, we added what is not taken care of in the regular lease, computer lease.
Anything beyond what the regular town meeting is?
It.
I would have included that only, and maybe we should include that, because they didn't say to limit it to just what is not being funded, right?
No, no, no.
We should probably, I'm sure that's not going to be hard to add. There's, we should, we should have a, we should have a technology piece, we should have a transportation piece, and then we have the facilities piece. And we're maybe not prepared to do it, but the curriculum piece that, we can talk about that. I just think the one caveat, what we should say at tomorrow's CPC is that we are embarking on a strategic planning process where we're doing deep dives into some areas that.
This is a work in progress.
This is a work in progress. This is, the facilities plan seems outside of a, you wanted to make an addition of looking at exploring cooling, not air condition, but cooling.
Correct.
For this building.
For the middle high school. I think we should at least explore that option or what are the options, especially in the swing months where it's, you know, pretty hot.
I will send out that plan again tomorrow morning with the additional things we've added. I'll make sure that.
I think we should put that technology replacement plan in there and we can see if that's what we want to do.
Those, that and the transportation plan are kind of addendums or, but we put in a line of about 60,000 for the networking needs that aren't included in any source of funding currently.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I suggest that maybe prior to our meeting tomorrow, maybe a subset of us just have a, it doesn't have to be in person, but just a conversation of what our plan is going into this meeting, so we all, at least we have, we know what our message is and how, how we're going to present the information that we have.
I think you should be the lead, right, as the member of the CPC unless you do not want to be the lead.
No, no, I'm, I'm happy to do that.
So what we should do is wait until the, to the super sends the plan, then you, myself can have a conversation and we can figure out, and then over the course of the day, I know it's going to be a little rushed, I wish we could have done some of it tonight, is we will figure out what we need to highlight and some of it may be like the curriculum piece.
And we have, the documents are on my desk. We can have the, just make some copies very quickly and have a short working session. I think I'm up to date with anything that John and Terry, no, there's nothing on there that I'm not aware of, so they're in a prioritized list and there are some years, but we can look at what would be kind of the five-year lookout.
Do you, do you want to do that now or do you want to grab?
I'm happy to.
Or do you, or do you want to grab Terry and, and John first thing tomorrow morning and do a quick look at, we're looking at a five-year lookout and, and then ship something off to us?
And even do a hybrid. We could make copies of how the plan is currently and look at it briefly tonight and then again tomorrow morning with Terry and John. Either way.
All right. We can take a break and we can, I mean, we still have a couple, we, we only have to, we have an executive session, but yeah, if we want to take a break, does the, what's the will of the committee here? Do you want, or do you want Kerry and I to take care of this tomorrow?
I, I'm happy to take, you know, if you want to send it to me, I'm happy to take a look at it tomorrow and not, and not make the rest of the committee sit through this.
Wait, hold on. What do you, what do you guys want? What does that table want?
It's completely up to you guys. You want to go through it tonight? We can. If you guys have a handle on it, then I'm okay with that. I know.
We can take care of it. You lost all your energy. It was all in the standard-based report cards. You need to pace yourself. Yes, Madam Superintendent.
I neglected under correspondence to mention one thing.
You can.
You have a copy of the online article from the Boston Globe, this Sunday's Boston Globe. Here is actual, an actual hard copy of a newspaper, which I haven't held in my hands for a long time.
Where'd you get that? You need to break it to a museum.
And it, front page of the real estate section of the Boston Globe, the title is "Five Public Districts with Innovative Programs in Affordable Communities," and it's entitled "School Choice." There are five school districts highlighted, Millis being one of them, Methuen, Dartmouth, Salem and, what was the other one? Salem, Millis and Littleton.
Littleton.
My former stomping grounds. What I, Millis is highlighted, and the way this came about was the reporter had contacted the Department of Education for recommendations about districts doing innovative things that were in affordable communities. She contacted us for information. Ours is on the personalized learning profiles that we're creating with every single student every year across the district now in every grade and trying to customize and personalize so that students receive the support they need and are challenged at appropriate levels. One thing that struck me when I read the article, too, was how many of the other innovations Millis also does. They, for example, Methuen is, they have across-the-board social emotional screening that we also do and have done since last year. And then the arts, I think our arts program in Millis is exceptional as well. And then Littleton is having a focus on STEAM and Salem has non-graded student groupings at a, at the early childhood level. So that was, we do have one ungraded or multi-grade classroom. So it was a testament, I think, to the hard work that teams of teachers have done around making, creating a way that we can systematize our personalized learning profiles so that every child is known at a deep level, their interests, their aspirations, as well as their skill level and content knowledge. And the teachers have done really exceptional work around this, so, thank you.
And I like that house. I don't want to move there, I just like that house. I looked at the article and you.
Where is that house?
No, this, no, there's another one on the paper.
That's Dartmouth.
I saw that, that popped up in my Google alert. Robin, I don't know if you know that, but I have a Google alert.
Oh, yeah?
Millis Schools and Harvard University, please. Our, oh, actually, we need to.
Can you set that up for yourself?
I, we're still on camera. You don't need to repeat it, we're still on camera.
We had that in our mind.
We are going in to go to executive session, so I need a motion and the language, and we're not coming back into open session. The language for the executive session is below.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to adjourn to executive session to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. General law, chapter 30A, section 22F and G.
Motion been moved and seconded. This will be, we will move into executive session, not to return to open session, so this will be a roll call vote. The Secretary Kerry Roach.
Yes.
Yes. Robin Briggs.
Yes.
Mark Conroy.
Yes.
Denise Gibbons.
Yes.
Stephen Catalano, yes. Okay. Good night and see you on the ninth, next week.